Well, good evening, everybody who's online and those in the Worship Center. We're so glad you're with us. It's been a very rainy day. Traffic has been horrible. So a lot of people are still trying to get here, etc. But of course, bless you, we do this online. And I'm working now to get the video posted onto our website prior to, before Friday. But I'll try my best to get it up tomorrow so people can have access to it. It's always on our YouTube page, no matter what. After we record, it's just beginning, it posted onto our webpage. Tonight, we begin to continue this journey into Deuteronomy. If I get up here. Let's get on to Bible study. So now, just to review where we're at, they have traveled from outside eye to Kadesh Barnia. There is a map within the PowerPoint slides. You can see Kadesh Barnia is, I have a box around it up here next to Amalek's. So that's where it is. You can see it where it is. So they have traveled there. They sent their spies in to evaluate the Promised Land. Of course, they came back and they complained and they shared false rumors. They turned away from God. And then without God, they tried to enter the Promised Land. And so we see them winning, well, they first lost in that when they went, they tried to enter. They tried to take the King's Highway up. And they won a couple battles, then they lost in their attempt to hit, as they attempted to head to Jericho on the King's Highway. So they had to come back down and turn around and go through the deserts, the desert journey out. So tonight, we're at, they're at the plains of Jericho on the east side of the Jordan River. After they journeyed through the desert to get away from the King's Highway. And there's a new generation in place. If you remember, there were 603,550 in the original count, when they first left from Exodus, of men 20 years in age up to about 50. And tonight, the only ones that are alive is Caleb and Joshua. All the ones that are there, there's 600, roughly 2,000 of them tonight, who are the new generation, who were not there, who were not in Egypt, who have no memory of Egypt. So now Moses is going to be retelling the story to them. So he's telling the story to the new generation as we prepare it into the Promised Land. So we've showed you, here's the map that you all have a copy of. Another map in here. We'll get some new maps next week to go a little more detail. So what is Deuteronomy? We look at the name. The name Deuteronomy comes from the Septuagint. The Septuagint was the seventy-two who translated into coined Greek. The title for the book of Deuteronomian, which means second law, repeated law. Well, this is, this is from the Christian point of view of what this is. But the Hebrew name for the book is Deverine, which means it's words, Moses' words. So this is Moses' words to the new generation. And this is the ending book of the Torah. We think of the Torah begins with Genesis and ends with Deuteronomy. These are the five books that are used within the Jewish faith in the synagogues. They begin at the beginning of every year. They begin by beginning reading in Genesis and they read the whole, all five books are read in entirety across, throughout, every time they come to service in the synagogue. They're going to hear a portion of the books. And that's what they read throughout the year. Sort of like we do in a liturgical year, we have a whole series of readings that we do, that we follow a liturgy of what we do, we have, that defines that. And we have three different variations of it. We tell the story of Jesus Christ from his birth to his death and resurrection, and to the birth of the new church and the journey of the new church after that. So I love finding pictures. And we find pictures. This is supposedly Moses there with the, with the, with the, those, the Israelites all gathered around. And I always, on Tuesday morning class, I ask, what's wrong with this picture? They look like they're Israelites, right? They all came from England. Yeah. Or Scotland, or Ireland. No, this is, this is what we do. We repurpose things and put the biblical figures into our image and the thing. So, so let's begin. So we begin with Moses' opening speech. And so, you know, it is to learn about what this, you know, in the previous last week, I gave you the overview of what it was to think about that. So one through two is, one through 11 is the speech. So let's begin. So, "These are the words Moses spoke to all Israel in the wilderness, east of the Jordan. That is, the Arabah, opposites up between Peron and Topel, Laban, Hazroth, and Dishob." It takes about 11 days. And we looked at, it takes 11 days to go from Horeb to Kadesh Barnia. We jump back real quick again. You can look at the map and you'll see, Horeb is down here at the very bottom of the Gulf of, at the Gulf entrance. And Kadesh Barnia is up in the, so they traveled about 11 days to get to that point. "In the fortieth year and the first day of the eleventh month, Moses proclaimed to the Israelites all that the Lord had commanded him concerning them." This was after he had defeated Sihon, king of the Amorites, who reigned in Hezbon, and Ederai had defeated Og, king of Bashim, who reigned at Asteroth. So that's, we see that that was the battles they won. So that was east of the Jordan, the territory of Moab. Moses began to expound this law, saying, "The Lord our God said to us in Horeb, 'You have stayed long enough at this mountain. Break camp and advance to the hill country of the Amorites. Go to all the neighboring peoples in the Arabah, in the mountains, in the western foothills of the Negev, and along the coast to the land of the Canaanites, and to Lebanon as far as the great river of the Euphrates. See, I have given you this land. Go and take possession of the land the Lord swore he would give to your fathers, to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and to their descendants after them.'" Remember, this is the covenant that was given to Abraham at the very beginning. He'll make them a people like the stars in the sky. He's giving him the land in Canaan. So we remember that. So it's the affirmation of the covenant that was there. Now, look at the fact, we think it, we're getting ready to go in to take the Promised. You know, God has given him the Promised Land. One thing to be given is a gift. The next, there's another thing to go and take it. People are living there. And they're going to be, they're going to have to go in and drive those people out or destroy those people to take this land. So that's, you know, but God has given them, that's what has been promised. And God will go with them to make this happen. We have seen God go with them. And when God goes with them, they tend to win. They will win. So that's what they're going to keep, keep themselves in that place. Well, that, so Moses is going on and he's reminding them of what took place. He says, "At that time, I said to you, 'You are too heavy, a burden for me to carry alone.' The Lord our God has increased your number so that today you are as numerous as the stars in the sky." Again, the covenant. "May the Lord, the God of your ancestors, increase you a thousand times and bless you as promised. But how can I bear your problems and your burdens and your disputes all by myself? Choose some wise, understanding, respected men from each of your tribes, and I will set them over you. You answered me. What purpose, what purpose to do, what you propose to do is good. So I took the leading men of your tribes." Well, first, Moses, when we first saw Moses, he got him in the Exodus, in the Promised Land. What was he doing? Well, first thing, Zephro left. Because Moses spent all day long, from morning to dusk, sitting there and having them all come to them because he was the only one that they could, they could come talk to, to work through their problems. So you're thinking, there's 2 million people, and they had more than six problems. So Moses, we've seen Moses, his family life has suffered greatly. So Zephro left, fled, went back to home, knocked on the door of her dad, Jethro. And of course, Jethro opened the door and goes, "Hi Dad, I'm home. I hear, I hear, I got your two grandsons with you, with us. We're going to move back in." And he goes like, "No, you're not. Just put your luggage over there. We're going to go back tomorrow." And he packed them right back up and brought them back to Moses. And he spent, if you remember, he sat there for a day watching him and said, "Wait a second. What are you doing? You need to appoint leaders of 1,110 over all your people who hear the disputes. And the only thing they bring to you are the major ones in which none of the leaders can solve. And then you bring those before God." So that's what we have to remember. Those are, so those respected men, and appointed them to have authority over you as commanders of thousands, of hundreds, and fifties, and tens, as tribal officials. "And I charge your judges at that time. Hear the disputes between your people and the judge fairly, whether the case is between two Israelites or between an Israelite and a foreigner." A foreigner, this is the translations, and I use as foreigner, other translations, alien. And remember, a foreigner or an alien has the full rights of an Israelite. The stranger is the person passing through, which has, is, you're supposed to care for them, but they don't have the rights of a permanent resident who is part of there. "Do not show partiality in judging. Hear both small and great alike. Do not be afraid of anyone, for judgment belongs to God. Bring me any case too hard for you, and I will hear it. And at that time, I told you everything you were to do. Then, as the Lord our God commanded us, we set out from Horeb and went towards the hill country of the Amorites, through all the vast dreadful wildernesses that you have seen." And so we reach Kadesh Barnia. About this time, you have all those young people who are there, 20 to 25 years of age, who grew up in the wilderness, have no memory of Egypt. And I think by that time, you've got someone standing up in there going, "Oh, Moses," throwing their hand up and waving and saying, "Moses, Moses, I have a question, Moses. Moses, why are you talking to us like we are our parents? We weren't there. We didn't do this. We have been. We have lived within the wilderness this whole time. We have been with you. We have learned to walk and trust God and do all these things. We're not the ones that rebelled. We're not the ones that did all this." Why would Moses, Moses is using the pronouns of, that they are the same people? Well, you need, we need to understand that we are connected. That what our forefathers done, did we are part of. Unlike the world we live in right now, where people don't want to hear of what took place in the past because it makes me feel bad. Oh, Bo Johnny's going to feel bad. Wait a second. The Israelites had to listen to what mom and dad did and grandpa because they needed to understand because they don't want to be like them anymore. They don't want to repeat what they did. You have to understand that. So he's teaching them what it is. So he's talking, "See, the Lord your God has given you land. Go up and take possession of it as the Lord, the God of your ancestors told you. Do not be afraid. Do not be discouraged, unlike your parents. Do not be afraid. Do not be discouraged." Then all they, then all, "You came back to me and said," that's what I'm saying. Well, we weren't there. Well, yeah. You all came back and let us send men ahead to spy out in the land and for us and bring back a report about the route we are to take and the towns we will come to. Well, your, your forefathers came back. And the idea seemed good to me. So Moses said, "I thought it was good." So he selected 12 of you and one man of each tribe, and he sent them out. But you were unwilling to go up. You, you know, they came, they came back. They went, they went there, they took, they got some fruit. The land brought it down to us, reported to us. It's a good land. The Lord our God is giving to us. We see the bounty is going to be there when you get there. God is giving us, giving you this land of milk and honey. It is a beautiful place, full of bounty we will provide and everything else. But you were unwilling to go up. You rebelled against the command of the Lord our God, your God. And that's what, again, your forefathers did. But you need to remember this so you don't do this. You grumbled in your tents and said, "The Lord hates us. So he brought us out of Egypt to deliver us into the hands of the Amorites to destroy us. Where can we go?" Our mothers, our hearts melt in fear. They said, "The people are stronger and taller than we are. The cities are large, like New York, with walls up to the sky. We even saw Anakites there. They were huge. Looked like the NBA basketball team showed up. They're all seven foot tall. We were scared." And I said, "You do not be terrified. Do not be afraid of them. The Lord your God is going before you, will fight for you, as he did for you in Egypt." Remember, God was right there, his cloud separated them from the Egyptians, provided for, destroyed the Egyptians, was there in front of them. He said, "They went anywhere. God led them. God provided for them." But that's where they, your forefathers didn't trust. And that's why we spent 40 years out here in the wilderness. There you saw how the Lord your God carried you, as a father carries his son all the way. You went until you reached this place. So here we are today, guys. We're all here, men and women, all your families. There's almost 2 million of you still here. We're getting ready to go at that. But it says, "Remember, just like your forefathers, in spite of that, in spite of this, they did not trust in the Lord your God. And you need to trust. Who went ahead of you on the journey in fire by night and cloud by day, to search out places for you, to camp and to show you the way you should go. When the Lord heard what you had said, he was angry and solemnly swore, 'No one from this evil generation shall see the good land I swore to give your ancestors, except Caleb, son of Jephona. He will see it, and I will give him and his descendants the land he set his feet on, because he followed the Lord wholeheartedly.'" Caleb, the driven dog, dog-like in the fact that he just grabbed hold and hails on, and he just trusted God in every single aspect. "Because you, the Lord, because of you, the Lord became angry for me, with me also, and said, 'You shall not enter it either.'" I love that. Moses says, "Because of you, the Lord became angry at me and also said, 'You shall not enter it either.'" Well, what happened, remember? God, we'll get to it later. We'll see it, is the number 20. We'll get there. And the fact that Moses was supposed to, they needed water. And God says, "Go and speak to the rock." Was it their fault? He got upset with them and got angry and reacted. And he got himself punished in that, in that respect. "But your assistant Joshua, son of Nun, will enter it. Encourage him, because he will lead Israel to inherit it. And the little ones that you said will be taken captive, your children, who do not yet know good from bad, they will enter the land." So all you here today, see, Moses is talking to you. You're the, you're the ones who are going to enter and take possession. You have to go take possession. But as for you, Moses, you turn around and set out towards the desert along the, you, you, turn around and set out towards the desert along the route to the Red Sea. Then you replied, "We have sinned against the Lord. We will go up and fight." So you thought, "Well, we have sinned. Well, now we're going to, we told God we weren't going to do it. And God gave us the punishment, and we heard the punishment. Oh, no, 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 we're ready to go. And we thought we would go do it without God." So everyone, you put on your, put on his weapons, thinking it was easy to go up into the hill country. "But the Lord said to me, 'Tell them, do not go up and fight, because I will not be with you, and you will be defeated by your enemies.'" And yes, they were. "So I told you, but you would not listen. You rebelled against the Lord's command and the arrogance, and you marched up to hill country. The Amorites who lived in those hills came out against you. They chased you like a swarm of bees and beat you down from Sierra all the way to Homa. You came back and wept before the Lord, but he paid no attention to your weeping and turned to a deaf ear to you.'" And so you stayed in Kadesh many days, all the time you spent, all the time you spent there. Well, they spent about almost 37 years in Kadesh Barnia, in that area. So they, well, I say they wandered in the wilderness. Well, they didn't. They wandered, they wandered around Kadesh Barnia. I guess that's wandering the wilderness, as we look at that. Carl Sagan says, "You have to know the past to understand the present." When we study the Bible, we need to understand the past. When we study our Christian faith, we need to understand what our forefathers did. We study church history. And I will guarantee you, we teach a church history class. If you have not been through one, it will make your heart hurt. For a year, I thought I was having a heart attack. Every time I heard the atrocities of what we did in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. The things we have done in the name of God are just as numerous and bad as what those, the Israelites did in Exodus and in Numbers. So we are the same, we're no different. And for us not to repeat it, we need to understand so we know how God blessed us and how God turned away from us and what we did wrong, so we don't do it. So you need to understand, know the past to understand the present. We jumped into Deuteronomy 6. "Love the Lord your God. These are the commands and decrees and laws the Lord your God directed me to teach you to observe in the land that you are crossing, crossing the Jordan to possess, so that you, your children and their children, after them, may fear the Lord your God as long as you, as long as you live by keeping all his decrees and the commands that I give you, and so that you may enjoy a long life." So this is decrees. So, "Hear, oh, hear, Israel, and be careful to obey, so that it may go well with you and that you may increase greatly in land flowing with milk and honey, just as the Lord your God, your ancestors, promised." In our faith, in Christianity, we, what do we do on Sundays? We say a creed, right? "I believe in God the Father, Creator of heaven and earth, and Jesus Christ is only Son, our Lord." Right? It's either the Apostles' Creed, the Iceman Creed. It's either the Apostles' Creed, the Nicene Creed. So we listen to those different creeds. Well, this is the creed that all Israelites would, would learn. Hear, oh, Israel, the Lord your God, the Lord is one. Love the Lord your God of all your heart, with all your soul, with all your strength. These commandments that I give you today are to be put on your hearts. And I quote, I quote this many times in the fact, because it goes further. This is what we need to do today, is remember these commandments. Ours is not, we take Jesus as just as this, along with, love thy neighbor as thyself, are the two commandments we live by, right? As we then press them on your children, talk them about when you sit at home and when you walk along the road, when you lie down and when you get up. Tie them as symbols on your hands and bind them on your foreheads. Write them on the doorframes of your houses and on the gates. I put a picture of there, this is, this is a mezuzah. And you will see, if you know anybody who's Jewish, you will see this on their doorframe. It's right at there's a little angle. So it's put on that angle up on the doorframe on the right-hand side. You walk in, they go, and they touch it as they go in. If you're left-handed, you put on the left hand. But that's what you, that's where they touch. In that, there's a little scroll and that's in, that's in Hebrew and it's, it's this. And so they're, they're reminding themselves every time they step in, they go into their house and go back out to love the Lord your God of all your heart, soul, mind and strength. Christians put these up on their doorframes the same way. You can get them at Amazon, two for $9 or $9 apiece, et cetera. They're a beautiful thing to remember. I was in, I was in Winter Sound the other day and Jim Winter has one on the inside the door. I have many friends who have them on inside their doors. It's a wonderful way of remembering that, you know, this is, the second is greater than the first. And they add, they add into that, the one to love God of thy neighbor as thyself. So what we're still, this is what we're supposed to live by. So that's, this is the shima that you heard about already. And the shima is something that you carry with you and that's what you, and you teach. This is what it is. Love your God, the Lord your God with all your, all your heart and with all your soul and all your, all your might. See, there are different translations of my, all your strength on that. But so, and again, is this not the one of the two we're supposed to know? So that's, you know, that's what we're supposed to live by. And it's, it's, you know, and you see how things evolve and things come right back to this point. When the Lord your God brings you into the land, he swore to your fathers, to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, to give you a land with large flourishing cities. You did not build. Houses filled with all kinds of good things you did not provide. Wells you did not dig and vineyards and all groves you did not plant. Then when you eat and are satisfied, be careful that you do not forget the Lord who brought you out of Egypt, out of the land of slavery. You're going, God is giving you this land. You're going to go and take it and God's going to be with you and lead you. So you will win and be able to drive out or destroy the peoples that are there. And you're going to receive all this wealth. Don't forget. What does Jesus talk to the wealthy person about? Go get rid of all your stuff because you'll never know God because you're so enamored of what you have that you forgot God is right there and God gave you all this. That we, everything we receive is a gift from God and they will, we will know they will forget in the journey. Fear the Lord your God, serve him only and take your oaths in his name. Do not, and Jesus says, let your yes be your yes, your no be your no, right? Do not follow other gods, the gods of the peoples around you. For the Lord your God, who is among you, is a jealous God and his anger will burn. I read that and I always think of the, you know, the, we get the Amish country, the Amish. They're trying to live a very simplistic life and very God-centered about everything they do. They are such a forgiving and caring and loving people that live, keeping God in the center of their lives. But they're surrounded by idols. They're surrounded by other gods. You think about, we're surrounded by other gods. We may, we not call them other gods, but they, they're fancy cars, they're nice houses, they're this, this kinds of clothes. There's all these things, everything else that we get enamored with that we don't pay attention to God. And that's what they're going, you know, that's the struggle they're going to be. There's, there're going to be other gods that they're worshiping. We have all kinds of things. We have idols we worship as far as people, pop stars, that, politicians, all those things. We pay more attention to them than we pay to God sometimes. So that's what he's telling that. For the Lord your God, who is among you, is a jealous God and his anger will burn. We'll be seeing his anger burn and I don't want it to burn. It burned against you and he will destroy you from the face of the land. Do not put the Lord your God to test as you did at Massa. Be sure to keep the commands of the Lord your God and the stipulations and decrees he has given you. Do what is right and good in the Lord's sight so that it may go well with you and you may go and take over the good land the Lord promised you on oath to your ancestors, trusting, thrusting out all your enemies before you as the Lord said. We all have a little bit of Bible knowledge and we know they won't, they will, they will succeed and then they will not succeed. They will end up being driven out themselves and, you know, put in a diaspora or something at those points. Another thing in Deuteronomy 4:7, it says, for what, what great nation is there that has a God so near to it as the Lord our God is to us whenever we call upon him? God is there for them as they enter in. They just need to call upon God and keep God in the center and they will succeed. And that's almost the thing. We jumped through and you all read the collection of laws, 12 to 26. I had to go back through them myself. That was a journey. And you saw that Moses evolved them a little bit and changed them and they grew. And we get down to Moses's final speech and death was verses 27 through 34. Well, let's jump to 32. Listen, you heavens and I will speak. Hear the earth in the words of my mouth. Let my teaching fall like rain and my words descend like dew, like showers on new grass, like abundant rain on tender plants. Not bad for a man with no words. What did he tell God in the very beginning? Oh, you can't send me. He had all those excuses and he got, the last one was, I'm not good. I don't speak well. I stutter. I struggle. Take your brother with you. Right? That's how he, and God solved it. It's like, well, I've heard one word and that's the last excuse you get. Bring Aaron with you. You can speak. I know you can. And so that's where it is. So this is a song of Moses. It contrasts the faithfulness of God with the, with the faithlessness of Israel. It is, I'd love to sit here and just read it. It is the most beautiful piece of poetry. He, just the way he put it together. I'll proclaim the names of the Lord. Oh, praise the greatness of our God. He is the rock. His works are perfect and all his ways are just. A faithful God who does no wrong, upright and just is he. They are corrupt and not his children to the shame they are warped and crooked generation. This whole chapter, I don't know if you've paid attention or you, I love poetry. And this was just singing, just saying, wow, he just, how he crafted the words and the fact of telling this story to them so it would stick with them, that they would hear these words. Is this the way you repay the Lord, you foolish and unwise people? Is he not your Father, your Creator, who made you and formed you? Remember the days of old? Consider the generations long past? Ask your Father and he will tell you, your elders, and they will explain to you. When the Most High gave the nations their inheritance, when he divided all mankind. It just goes on. He set up boundaries of the people according to the numbers of the sons of Israel. Well, he jumped to the end and we see Moses came with Joshua, son of Nun, and spoke to all the words of this song in the hearing, in the hearing of the people. So Moses with Joshua went before the people and shared this beautiful song to them. I always wondered, did he actually, did he, was it, it's poetry? Did he sing it? I mean, you know, in the fact, because, you know, we don't think about, we read Psalms. They were sung. This was, that was the first music. That was what they sang. They sang those Psalms and we look at them and go, oh, you know, how do we sing this? And what do we say? He said, everybody, it's a different kind of music, different place. It's like stepping back into, you know, 1880. And this was the music they played for them, what we live, what we live now. When Moses finished reciting all these words to all Israel, he said to them, take to heart all the words I have solemnly declared to you this day. So that you may command your children to obey carefully all the words of this law. They are not just idle words for you. They are your life. If you obey and do what God has instructed you to, you will have a life that you can't even imagine. You're going to receive and be blessed. By them, you will live long in the land you are crossing the Jordan to possess. So they're going to, this is the journey they're on is to go and receive this land. So Moses told, told this, told the story to Israel, the descendants of those who fled Egypt. If we think about Saint Stephen, Stephen was one of the, was one of the first, one of the first seven disciples, deacons. We jump into Acts. You know, a lot of times we, by jumping to the New Testament, sometimes we learn things and remind you of the things that may not be there. The fact, but what, what Stephen would know, being raised up within the Jewish faith, being in the synagogues, having the, the rabbis teaching, et cetera, that many things. At this point, many things are not written down. They have the scrolls, but they're that, but the rabbis are still teaching a lot of things word of mouth. They've been taking down for generations. So here's Stephen, his speech to the Sanhedrin. And some of your translations will say Stephen's defense. But think about this. Stephen's being brought to the Sanhedrin about charges, right? So what's he do? And the high priest says, so Stephen, are these charges true? And then to this he replied, brothers and sisters, listen to me. The God of glory appeared to your father Abraham while he was still in Mesopotamia. Before he lived in Haran, leave your country and your people, God said, and go to the land I will show you. This doesn't sound like he's defending anything. So he left the land of the Chaldeans and settled in Haran. After the death of his father, God sent him to his land where you are now living. He gave him no inheritance here, not even enough around, ground to set his foot on. But God promised him that he and his descendants after him would possess the land, even though, though at that time Abraham, Abram had had no child. Is he defending? No, he's teaching. He is there before the Sanhedrin and he's reminding them of what they should already know to understand who he is and what Jesus Christ is doing. Jesus constantly confronting them for what they should know. And he goes in the temple and turns over the tables. They forgot Malachi. They forgot what God had instructed them to do in Leviticus and how to take care of the temple and how to manage the, what was, what was worthy to be brought before God. They had forgot all that. It became a money changing business, profit, taking care of us and giving us all these things. So Stephen is talking to them and teaching them. He says, God spoke to him in his way for 400 years. Your descendants will be strangers in a country, not their own, and they will be enslaved and mistreated. And they're probably all going, yeah, that's right. Well, Stephen, you're getting an A right now. You're, you're telling us, why are you telling us this? We should know this. He's telling them because they're not listening. They haven't listened. So he goes on and Abraham became your father of Isaac and circumcised him eight days after his birth. And step by step, they're walking through, he's walking through, great suffering. Your ancestors could not find food. When the Jacob heard that there was grain in Egypt, he sent our forefathers to the first visit. He's telling the story of how they got where they are right now to remember that God is the one who has chosen them. God is one who's bringing them to become the people of the, you know, the holy people that God has been calling to become. He continues on and he gets down into verse 20. He says, at that time Moses was born and he was no ordinary child. For three months he was cared for by his family. His mother took care of him, kept him hidden, right? She had to hide him until he started crying so loud that she could no longer hide him. And when that, when he was placed outside Pharaoh's daughter, took him and brought him. She, remember, he, she took, she created a basket, put tar on the outside of it. And just by haphazard, she just dropped him in the water and he ended up over by the Pharaoh's daughter, right? And Miriam just happened to be standing there. No, she knew exactly how, I put him in here. The water, the current's going to take him right over to where the Pharaoh's daughter bays. If I do that, I'm going to send my daughter, my eldest child, Miriam's going to go there and be waiting there in the reeds. So when her brother arrives, and that's what happened, took him and brought him up, and took him and brought him up his own. She would see him. And what did she do? And she opened up the basket. She didn't, she, did she hear him cry? She received, she said, what, bring me that basket. And she opened it up, pulled back the blanket over him and saw this baby crying without sound. And you've seen that before, probably a child that can, their black mouth just quivering and stuff. There's just no sound. And she saw him and her heart just melted. I'm, I'm going to, can I, can I keep him? And that's what she did. She, then Miriam just like, oh, do you need someone to nurse him? I can go find someone for you. I'm a good slave girl. I will help you. I'm going to go get my mom, his mom. And that's what she did. So she took him and raised him and brought him up on her, as her son. And Moses was educated in all the wisdom of the Egyptians and was powerful in speech and action, unlike what, remember how humble Moses is? He, he tells us how humble he was. But he's also, he's telling, God has called him in the very beginning. And he's like, I can't do this. I can't do this. I can't do, I don't have this. And I, we all do that. I did it. God called me, called me, called me. And I mean, it just had to get louder and louder until I finally said, yes. Lord, how am I going to do this? I, I'm an introvert. You want me to be an extrovert up front? You want me to stand up there? I'm going to, I'm going to just vibrate. And that's what I used to do is like just hang on, everything would just shake. And that's what you would do. But God provides. God gives you these skills. So in 32, we witnessed Moses's powerful words. He was just very powerful. And we jump towards the end, we get to 34, the death of Moses. Then Moses climbed Mount Nebo from the plains of Moab to the top of Pisgah, across from Jericho. There the Lord showed him the whole land. And it must have been a beautiful, beautiful day. I've been there and I'm going to show you pictures of there. And the day I was there, it was not that clear. But on a clear, they said, and people, the people who've been there before will tell you, on a clear, clear day, you can see from Gilead to Dan, which is up north, all the way to the, Natali, the territory, Ephraim and Manasseh, that's over to the right, towards Syria. So all the land of Judah as far as the Mediterranean Sea, you can see all the way to the sea, the Negev and the whole region from the valley of Jericho to the city of Palms as far as north. On a clear day, you can see Jerusalem today. On a very clear day, you can see the Church of the Holy Septicrs, golden dome in the city. One of the archaeologists who were there with us said, he was, he was, said, yeah, you can. He says, it's amazing what you can, we were reading this going, huh? Can we see that? Then the Lord said to him, this is the land I promised you on oath to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. When I said, I will give it to your descendants, I have let you see. And if you're, it was your eyes, but you will not cross into it. And the question was why? And we, and again, it's remind ourselves in Numbers, as the fact, we jumped to Numbers 20. We get to the, the next thing, I think I actually have it in here. Yep. We go on here, jump to 20. The Lord said to both The Lord said to Moses, take the staff and your brother Aaron, gather the assembly together. Speak to that, speak to that rock before their eyes and it will pour out its water. I was trying to find the pictures of where this is and I couldn't, I wasn't able to find it. You will bring water out of the rock for the community so that they and their livestock can drink. Go and speak to it. So Moses took the staff from the Lord's presence, just as he commanded him. He and Aaron gathered the assembly together in front of the rock. And Moses said to them, listen, you rebels, must we bring you water out of this rock? I think he was more angry. And he said, these rebels, he's probably, listen, you rebels, you've been complaining and all you did was just complain, why, why, I need water, I need water, I need to go bathroom, I need this, I need that, et cetera. And he's just so angry with them and he just picks it up and then Moses raises his arm and he just struck the rock. He hit it and the water came gushing out and the community of livestock drank. So what did he do wrong? He did not do it for God's glory, he did it for his glory. The Lord said to Moses and Aaron, because you did not trust me enough to honor me as holy in the sight of the Israelites, you will not bring this community in the land I gave you. God leads us and we need to listen and we need to do and give the glory to God. It's not what we do. Everything we do in this church is God's. Everything I do is God's. There's nothing, it's not my gifts, it's God. God has opened doors for everything. When we trust God, it's the most amazing things happen. And that's what we struggle with, to trust God, to step out, to trust God to do this, to trust God to expand or to do this, whatever we have done. To trust God is the most difficult thing we do. But when we do and we give God the glory, God is there. And that's what we learn from that. Now Joshua, son of Nun, was filled with the spirit of wisdom because Moses had laid his hand on him. So Israelites listened to him and did what the Lord commanded Moses to do. Well, I think we're going to learn about Joshua more, right? That's the next book. Since then, no prophet has risen in Israel like Moses, with whom the Lord knew face to face, who did all those signs and wonders the Lord sent him to do in Egypt to Pharaoh and to all his officials into this whole land. For no one has ever shown the mighty power performed the awesome deeds that Moses did in the sight of all Israel. Moses is one of the most greatest members, greatest people in the Bible. He's the one we're going, that, we will see more and we'll learn more. And the fact, to think of what he did, he did it with the power of God. He did it by listening to God. He had a relationship with God that we all dream of. He was the only one who was seeing God from the back and seeing the presence of God and been there before God and talked directly back and do what we need to do sometimes. What David learned to do, we read the Psalms and the laments that we read. The laments are, you know, Lord, where were you? Why haven't you done this, blah, blah, blah. It's all those things and they're lamenting, they're talking to God. And sometimes you're angry. And a lament, you begin in that anger and by the end you're going, now I see. You were there the whole time. I took my eyes away from you. Lord, forgive me. But you need to have that kind of relationship. We do that with others. We have, you need to have a relationship in which we can show how we feel and talk to God in that, and talk in a real way, not always hold it all back, oh, Lord. You know, we gotta talk to God in that way. And God wants that, wants that relationship with us. And then we go deeper, we do that. So I want to bring you up to Mount Nebo, but you see some places up there. So it's a Christian holy place. It's also, we saw outside of that, there's also, the Muslims have an area they come to up there. We stand up on top of the Mount Nebo and you can see, there's the chart that shows you with the different directions when you sit there and looked, which way was Jericho in front of you? He'll go to the left of Dead Sea. You could see the different places you went. So I looked out in the countryside and that's what I say, wasn't written, wasn't, we wish we had a real clear day, but you can see it a good distance. And you'll get, and you see, and you also get to know, this is what the desert looks like. Would you want to spend 40 years, 40 years in this? This is like going to Amarillo, Texas. I used to go to, I used to go to Texas all the time and work and all different areas. But I got to Amarillo, I remember I had a, one of the vice presidents with the company I was working with was, came from Hartford, you know, up at New England, was out there. And we would go to this place at the very edge of town. It was the Amarillo Hot Dog Stand. Well, the Amarillo Hot Dog Stand sold, had steaks. I mean, for $7.95, you got a huge steak, a baked potato, fresh homemade rolls, homemade pie, homemade dressing on a salad, everything else, most amazing meal. But we'd get done and we'd walk, we'd walk out and you'd walk over to the edge of town and you'd sit there and look at it. And all you saw was this, except you saw tumbleweeds. And he goes, would you want to live here? And I'm like, no. But people loved it out there. I'm like, nah, this is not my place. So you're sitting there and you're looking and this is what you're looking out at. So you're seeing, this is what we saw on that. You can't, we could see over here, there's some greenery, you could see into Israel, but you can't, didn't come out in the pictures on that. But we can see down in there, you would see, this is what we look out in the distance is what you're seeing when you look towards the mountains, et cetera. We would see that's where that is. You see, there's some farming that's taking place down there. I think those are almond trees that are planted down, that bound in that area. We look out towards the Dead Sea, date tree, these may be date trees. Date trees go really well because of the salt. So that's what they have, some of the best dates in the world. I used to be able to find them and I, someday I'll find some and bring to class or whatever. They're really good. They're different than the dates that we get here because dates trees really love that salt, that salty soil. So that's what you're seeing out. So you got to sit there and look out and say, wow. It's not like a place you want to go hang out. So we're up on Mount Nebo. No one knows where Moses's grave is, why? Why would God not want, nobody knows where his grave is? It tells you in Scripture. We don't want people going in to worship that. You know, the early Christians went there, the Byzantine, there's a Byzantine chapel built there, was built there. Saint Sophia's, Constantine's wife, mother, traveled throughout Egypt and Israel, et cetera, looking for all the places that are biblical where they took place at. And they built Byzantine churches, were erected, et cetera. Over time, they were destroyed, the Muslims tore them down, et cetera. They were destroyed in battles, et cetera, and got rid of. But this one we went to, this is, it tells you about this custody of this, of the Franciscan monks take over, are ones who run it. We see it. They've constructed this building on top of, it was an archaeological dig that found the Byzantine church. They heard about it, you know, in the 20th century. And they went and they sent people up to go find it. And they began to dig and they found what the remnants of the Byzantine church that was there. So they built this building up over top of it to protect what they found. And we start seeing parts of the walls, et cetera, they re-erected back, et cetera. You see some of the, you see some of the mosaics, et cetera. They had them on the walls and the floors. There's mosaics that were there originally. And the mosaics like this is over here on the right is, has to do with Noah. There's all the animals, et cetera. I mean, it's just beautiful, the terrazzo work and so it's just unbelievable what's there. We got to be in there and this is some of us, what others gathered in there. The Franciscan monks are up there doing service and so we're up there watching. Some other locals, locals are up there up front having actual service. We're just in the back paying attention as they go, as they go through a Franciscan service. Yeah, it's, it's, so it's Catholic, so it is the fact they, they're really, they, they do iconography and the fact it is the different, it's different. It's Moses, I'm trying to remember this, probably, I think, I know Moses is up there and it's probably Joshua, et cetera. Because this is, this is the ending point where they came to. And Moses will go up Mount Nebo, there at the base of Mount Nebo, they went up. He went up the hill and that's where he died, somewhere in the mountainous region. And there's a lot of mountain in that area. We were in another area, we were in Petra. And we can go, when we were in Petra, I'll show you pictures at some point of that. There's another area, we go beyond Petra, up in the mountains. And we went up into that area and you can see over where we think Aaron is buried on that. So the unmarked grave, don't know where he is, et cetera. So in fact, I always think about these, there's nothing around up on this place. And these Franciscan monks, I'm going, whoa, what do you do all day long? It's not like there's internet or anything else. So I love that, this saying in here, the fact, for a while the law was given through Moses. Grace and truth came through Jesus Christ. And you really think about it, this is what, I have a pair of handouts, if you, if you grab about biblical law. It's really good to go read. It came from, it came from Bible Project on that and I wouldn't have read it. Everything I found from them, I love because it's right on. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's the saying, this is as it is. It's not this theological, it's not being pulled from a Baptist point or a Pentecostal or a Methodist or, you know, a Catholic or whatever. This is, read this and understand what is taking place. It's very biblically sound. It's what we, what we would do in seminary. It's the fact that you're trying to say, what is it, what's saying? And it really gives you what we think about when Walter Brueggerman, I gave you that one thing, well, he talked about the evolution of our understanding. This helps you understand the evolution of our understanding. We can't hold on to Deuteronomy law and people quote it all the time, Leviticus. Wait a second, that has nothing to do with us today. It was written for us very specific to bring a people into community, but we want to point to it. We want to quote it. Paul quotes from it. Paul, if you, if you read Paul in order, not in the order as in the Bible, but read it in the order he wrote his letters, you will see an evolution. He will see him starting to change in his understanding of things. But he falls back to, what was he? He was a Pharisee, a teacher of the law. Well, how hard is it to give up? Julia, you play trumpet. You fall back to that. You learned it, that's where you loved it, you played it and everything else. And you can't say, well, now I'm, I'm down doing clarinets, I'll forget all that. You don't forget it. You hang on to it. It's hard to get rid of the past. But when we keep putting God in the center and Paul constantly puts, say, Lord, I need to listen to you. I need to, I need to listen to your son, what he told me, what he taught, et cetera. I need to let go. But he's trying to bring people together in community, just as God brought all these Israelites who lived in Egypt as slaves into community. He's bringing Gentiles into community. Gentiles who worship different gods. Gentiles who live in a culture that would make most of us cringe. And the way they live, that, you know, the Greeks and Romans would sleep with their mothers and sisters and everything else. And you're like, and the orgies and the things they did and stuff like that. And you went to worship this god or that god and they have temple horrors and they had this and all. And we'd be like, oh, we couldn't imagine that. But that's what he's bringing into community who are coming in. He's saying, stop, you can't, you gotta give, you gotta, to walk with Christ, you need to start loving thy neighbor. You've got to take care of each other. You've got to treat each other as you would treat your own self. That's a hard thing to do, to let go of it. It's no different than we think of letting go of what was the past when we think of slavery and things like that. We, many of us are raised with these thoughts given to our parents and for parents before that of who these people, who this person was or that. And we enable and label and do that. To walk with Christ, we got to let all that go. We got to turn away from all that and say, that's my brother, that's my sister. And love each other. And that's what Paul is trying to do. So that's what we see. So we conclude, Moses is one of the greatest figures in the Bible, right? He has died, but you're going to see him two more times. I'll let you be surprised when you find him. And next week, we begin the journey in the promised land entering to Jericho. So I want to end like I did last week, I'll give you an introduction to Joshua.
The Book of Joshua. Let's back up and remember the story so far. So God chose Abraham and then his family became the people of this world, who are then enslaved down in Egypt. And so through Moses, God rescued Israel out of Egypt. He made a covenant with them at Mount Sinai and he brought them through the wilderness. So Israel then camped outside the promised land and Moses called them to obey God's commands so that they could show all the other nations what God is like. The Book of Joshua picks up right after Moses has died and Israel's ready to enter the land. So the story of Joshua is designed with four main movements. Joshua first leaves Israel into the promised land. And then once they're there, they meet all this hostility from the Canaanites and so they engage them in battle. Then after their victories, Joshua divides up the promised land as the inheritance for the 12 tribes. And then the book concludes with these final speeches that Joshua gives to the people. So let's dive in and we'll see how all of it flows together. The first section begins with Moses's death and Joshua is appointed as Israel's new leader. And the author intentionally presents Joshua as a new Moses. So like Moses, Joshua calls the people to obey the Torah, which means the covenant commands that they were given at Mount Sinai. And then Joshua sends spies into the land, just as Moses did back in Numbers, chapters 13 and 14, except it goes way better this time. In fact, even some Canaanites turn and follow the God of Israel. Joshua then leads all Israel across the Jordan River and into the land. Just like the sea parted for Moses in Exodus, so here, the river Jordan parts and the priests carry the ark of the covenant across, leading all Israel with them. Now, in chapter five, the story transitions. So the people look back to their roots as God's covenant people. And so the new generation is circumcised and they celebrate their first Passover in the land. But then they turn and prepare to go forward. And Joshua has this crazy encounter with a mysterious warrior, who it turns out is the angelic commander of God's army. And Joshua asks, are you for us or are you for our enemies? And the warrior responds, neither, which shows that the real question here is whether Joshua is on God's side. It makes clear that this whole story is not about Israel versus the Canaanites. Rather, this is God's battle. And Israel is going to play the role of spectators or sometimes supporters in God's plan, which leads to the next section. We find stories about all these conflicts that Israel had with different Canaanite groups. And the first part retells the story of two battles in detail. And that's followed by a series of short stories that condense years of battles into a few brief summaries. So the first two battles are against Jericho and then Ai. And they offer these contrasting portraits of God's faithfulness versus Israel's failure. At Jericho, Israel is to take a completely passive approach. So they let God's presence in the ark lead them around the city to music for six days. And just like Rahab turned to the God of Israel, maybe the people of Jericho would do the same, but they don't. And so on the seventh day, the priests blow the trumpets and the walls come falling down, leading Israel to victory. The point of the story is that God is the one who will deliver his people. Israel simply needs to trust and wait. Now, the next story of the battle at Ai makes the opposite point. So there's this Israelite named Ahchan. And he steals from Jericho some of the devoted goods that were to belong to God alone. And then he lies about it. It's a pretty lame move after all that God has done for Israel. And so Israel goes into battle with the city of Ai and they're totally defeated. And it's only after humble repentance and severely dealing with Ahchan's sin that Israel gains victory. And so together, these two stories, they're placed right up front to make an important point. If Israel is going to inherit the land, they have to be obedient and trust in God's commands. They don't get special treatment. Now, the second part of this section begins with the Gibeonites, a Canaanite people group. And they do just what Rahab did, is they turn to follow the God of Israel and they make peace with Israel. This is in contrast to all of these other Canaanite kings who start to form alliances and coalitions and they want to destroy Israel. So Israel engages them in battle and they win by a landslide. And so this whole section concludes with this summary list of all of these victories won by Moses and then by Joshua. Now, let's stop for a second because odds are that these stories and the violence in them, they're going to bother you. And if you're a follower of Jesus, you're bound to wonder, like, didn't Jesus say to love your enemies? Why is God declaring war here? So first, why the Canaanites? The main reasons are actually given earlier in the biblical story. It's that the culture of the Canaanites had become extremely morally corrupt, especially when it come corrupt, especially when it comes to sex. Go check out Leviticus, chapter 18. And they also widely practiced child sacrifices. Go see Deuteronomy, chapter 12. And so God didn't want these practices to influence Israel. The Canaanites had to go. Which raises the second question. Did God actually command the destruction of all of the Canaanites, like a genocide? So at first glance, you know, you look at the phrases used in these stories. They totally destroyed them. They left no survivor or anything to breathe. But when you look a second time, more closely, you'll see that these phrases are clearly hyperbole and not literal. So go back to the original command about the Canaanites in Deuteronomy, chapter 7. Israel is first told to drive out the Canaanites, but then to totally destroy them. And then that's followed by commands to not intermarry with them or enter into business deals with them. So you can't marry someone that you've destroyed, I think you get the point. The same idea applies to the stories in Joshua. Look closely. So for example, we're told in Joshua, chapter 10, that Israel left no survivors in the cities of Hebron or Deir. But then later, in chapter 15, we see these towns, and they're still populated by Canaanites. And so what we're seeing is that Joshua fits in with other ancient battle accounts by using non-literal, hyperbolic language as part of the narrative style. And so the word genocide doesn't actually fit what we see here, especially in light of the stories about the Canaanites who did turn to the God of Israel, like Rahab or the Gibeonites. God was open to those who would turn to them. The last thing to think about is that these stories mark a unique moment in Israel's history. These battles were limited to the handful of people groups living in the land of Canaan. With all other nations, Israel was commanded by God to pursue peace. Go read Deuteronomy, chapter 2. And so the purpose of these battle stories was never to tell you, the reader, to go commit violence in God's name. Rather, they show God bringing his justice on human evil at a unique moment in history, and how he delivered Israel from being annihilated by the Canaanites. Now, let's go back to the book's design. After years of battles, we see an aging Joshua, and he starts dividing up the land for the 12 tribes of Israel. And most of this section is like lists of boundary lines. And let's be honest, it's kind of boring. It's like reading a map that has no pictures. But for the Israelites, these lists were super important. This was the fulfillment of God's ancient promises to Abraham, that his descendants would inherit the Promised Land. And so now it was all coming to pass right down to the detail, which leads to the final section. Joshua gives two speeches to the people that are very similar to the final speeches of Moses in Deuteronomy. Joshua reminds them of God's generosity, how he brought them into the land and rescued them from the Canaanites. And so he calls them to turn away from the Canaanite gods and be faithful to the covenant they made. If they do, it will lead to life and blessing in the land. But if they're unfaithful, Israel will call down on itself the same divine judgment that the Canaanites experienced. They'll be kicked off the land into exile. And so Joshua leaves Israel with a choice. What is Israel going to do? That's the big question that looms as the story ends, and that's the Book of Joshua.
Let's say a prayer. Family, Father, we just are, we are blessed in this journey, as we learn more about you, and we learn this story, which is so meaningful, and helps us understand the journey that we're on with you and Jesus Christ, our Lord, your Son. Lord, be with us this week as we read, and just to bless us in this journey. We ask all this to your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. See you all next week.